Evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. We're at a monthly meeting. Need a roll call?
Mayor Dave Mirandi.
Here.
Trustee Marie Early.
Here.
Trustee Lynn Miller.
Here.
Trustee Frances Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Steve Vellato.
Here. This is Vellato.
You can call him Steve.
Okay, monthly reports. We have recreation. Up first, I have an email from Bruce Campbell, who's the chair. Cole Spring Recreation Committee met Tuesday, May 16th. Approved the request for Cub Scout BBQ at Mayor's Park. Discussed the past request by John Shear for a beer festival, which was denied. Recreation felt that such requests in the future should require the following: increased liability insurance, payment for police support, additional fees for use. Since not a not-for-profit organization, the estimate would be a $750. Full garbage would be taken off Mayor Park's property after event; otherwise, an additional fee. A detailed print plan submitted to recreational application for the planned layout of the event. Let's see. Next is a discussion wedding requests for bandstand. Future requests will require a planned layout of the wedding setup in order to stay within the immediate area of the bandstand and not on West Street. Additional fee if any other police officer is required. Further discussion on Mayor Park agreement with Howding. Still in process to define. Will continue discussion. Met with Mr. Forti of Howding. They purchased two new benches for the dugouts. They will power wash and paint both dugouts. Discussion of Russ Terrio's work. I met with Russ and will meet again to go over the needs, et cetera. Further discussion on bench plaque results, requests, sorry. Discussion with representatives of Tots Park. Discussion with tree committee rep. Plan the committee with tree committee twice a year. Meeting was adjourned.
The suggestion, which I'll let to Bruce, is we'll take to the garbage. I recommend that we request a refundable deposit in case the garbage is not removed. That way, we have money. Also, I'll follow up with a minute.
Okay, we have a lot of no reports tonight, so might get out here quickly. Planning board, we do not have. Zoning board appeals, we do not. Town of Phillips Town.
Good evening, everybody. Got a couple things to report on. First of all, just to say thank you to Mary Sarve and Mary Landoffy. They're both retiring. They're both retired already, so I thank you very much for your service and dedication, all those years of service. Also, let's congratulate all the Howding graduates from high school and college over the last couple weeks. And Howding's graduating, I think, on Saturday. And any other people who graduated from high school in Phillips Town. Works began on every road bridge. We've been talking about that for a little while, but making some pretty good progress over there. Expect to complete by the end of July. It's expected planning date to be done with that. We also started working on the annex, which is going to be the new building department. It's pretty well gutted at this point. Start excavation and making some pretty good progress over there as well. We also hired a high-level architect to start working on the actual town hall itself to do some renovations in there. As we know, we want to put an elevator in, change the staircase, put a new staircase in here. But that can't happen until we get everybody out of the building department into the new annex building. We've also put new air conditioning in the upstairs, the courtroom, in the meeting room upstairs, so that's just about completed. And also, on the Mantho Station Road, we're still waiting for the DEC permits, which hopefully should get them soon, but we've been waiting many, many months on those. We're still waiting for the DEC to get us to green light this to get started on here. Also, we passed a resolution making Phillips Town a climate smart community. With the Garris, the, what do you call it? The garden club came to us a few weeks ago and presented this to us, and so we decided it was a good thing to do, so maybe you might be just enjoying it and getting on and plowing with that as well, but it seems like a pretty good program, so that's it.
What is it exactly?
Well, it's supposed to reduce our, try to reduce our carbon footprint, is one thing. Use resource of the new energy as opposed to fossil fuels and stuff like that, solar energy and stuff like that. That's the plan.
Okay, Sark District Review. Have a letter from Chair Alf Liguinsky. Current applications during the month of May, the review board received numerous applications, so that it required a total of three meetings to properly process. Applications were voted, that were voted on, were 15 Fishkill Avenue facade changes and an addition, seven Market Street facade change in addition, 124 Main Street facade changes, the chapel restoration, addition of air conditioning, five Fair Street, construction of Dogpen, and 45 Pauling installation of solar panel. In addition, a number of the above applications also require workshop sessions to facilitate the completion. The review board also held workshops for the following applications that are not yet ready for a review board vote. Thirty Fair Street modifications to rear facade, and 126 Main Street demolition of existing structure, and then new construction. Review board conducted a site visit on May 10th as part of this application. Thirty-one, thirty-five Market Street, possible demolition of an existing structure, still early in the workshop process. Coordinates update, the proposed revisions of Chapter 64 of the Village Ordinance is with the Board of Trustees. The next step would be a public hearing held by the Board of Trustees and then a vote to adopt the changes.
That's strange. I didn't think we had that.
It doesn't went to John.
I thought it went to the lawyer also. We don't have that.
I've been told to get out about that.
Yes.
We're waiting for it to come back from John.
Design standards update. The review board is currently working with Steve Tilly, the consultant on updating this document, Phase One. Research is now complete. After the last joint meeting, work on portions of the document was assigned to various parties based on who would be best suited to develop the specific topic. There are portions of the standards which would require significant input from the review board. We're finalizing our portions, which will shortly turn over to the consultant for the text, consultant, the text for incorporation into the standards. Thank you, Al. We have nothing from Putnam County. Cole Spring Boat Club, don't believe. Fire Company in full force here tonight.
Evening, everybody. Yep, we're here. Just some inquiries, unless you have something you want to start, if you have any information or unless, no, I guess. Roof, ACs, anything, or siren.
I wanted to ask you about the antennas and the stuff on the roof. Have you found out anything about?
Yeah, I talked with the chief. He says that the one antenna is actually still functioning on the roof, so that would need to stay.
Okay. So we don't have to get rid of it then?
Yeah, we're gonna need that. The air conditioning, I dropped off the portable AC pamphlet. I don't know if anyone had a chance to take a look at it.
I did not.
Okay. Dropped off it, trustee Early, one day, and then I was just hoping that you guys had an opportunity to look at it, so I'd break something down like usual, so you could take a look at, seeing if it's feasible to rent those and if there's money aside for those, or what we're gonna do about the air conditioning for the firehouse. So I was hoping, that was about two weeks ago I dropped it off you.
I didn't see it, so I'll get that and review it.
You asked that if you put in Steve's mail, which is what I did.
Hold on, I just wanted it to be viewed. I don't think Steve directly, but it does make a difference. I'll have to, I'll do it myself.
If I remember correctly, it was $2,000 a month to rent, including installation and labor?
Okay, so you did look at it. All right, yeah, so it's about $2,000.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it was about $2,000 a month with the units to rent, and they're like special-sized units, and then there's an outlet for it that needs to be put into place, and then they were looking at two months of renting them. I think it was going to be July and August, were the two months that the fire company felt like it was gonna need it. We definitely need it for July because of the Fire Academy, which we're hosting again for 15th year in a row, so we can't have 55 children and people visiting, I guess, sitting in the back room. It gets a little warm back there. I don't know, I don't know. Can you just help me out? I don't know what you want me to?
I didn't see it, so I will look at it. And we meet in two weeks. I'll look at it as soon as, we'll look at it tomorrow.
Okay. We could break down another copy.
I put it in Steve's mail.
Yeah, I don't have, I've never seen it.
It's been asked.
In the box?
Yeah.
We'll find it, we'll look at it.
If you need another copy, let me know. I just, again, we'll be inquiring if it's feasible to get them, and then if we can't get them, we need to know as soon as possible because the price probably goes up, obviously, as, you know, summer months are going on, so. Well, when I dropped it off, it was $2,000, that was the quote. Hopefully, that's gonna be the same. We're probably gonna need to know almost immediately about if it's an option, because the longer we wait, the more they are.
Well, it was $2,000 a month for the rental, plus installation, plus something else. That was what was handwritten. That's what you handwrote on it.
Yeah, that's what we wrote on.
Installation and something else.
The installation, it was the hookup.
Electrical, you gotta put a 229 in to support the air conditioning unit.
Any idea what all that will cost?
I'm sorry?
Any idea what?
Probably know tomorrow.
Sorry?
Probably know tomorrow. I'll know by-
We'll know tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And the roof, by any chance, are we?
Waiting on getting together with Steve and getting specs and doing it.
Okay.
And he was waiting on you. He was waiting on you for the antenna response, which he just received.
We're ready. We just have to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And then the siren was the last, I'm just saying, oh, so it doesn't work.
What's that?
The siren doesn't work still. I think I, it was a couple months ago we talked about it.
We just-
They're just inquiring.
We just paid the maintenance on the siren.
It hasn't worked for three months. What, was it for Padal?
No, no, it wasn't. I forget who, there was a company.
Metro Cal?
It was the, it was in the $350 to $400 range, and we approved that bill to be paid at the last meeting.
I remember that, too.
And I just assumed that because the bill was submitted, that everything was fine. I had no knowledge that it wasn't working, because this firm charged us $350 or $400 to do annual maintenance to something that's not working.
Yeah, it's, uh-
Are we talking about the same alarm?
It was the siren.
Yeah, it's the siren.
Monthly, annual siren maintenance was what the bill was.
I would call them.
But, I mean, what does not work?
It doesn't work.
Not going off.
The siren doesn't work at all.
At all?
It's not blowing 12 and 6, it's not blowing for calls.
Okay.
Did you know about this?
So I-
I did. I've contacted Padal about it because someone told me that he, I think it was Steve, had told me that they had fixed it temporarily before or something, and-
And where did that go?
I guess they're not interested.
What's that?
I guess they're not interested in doing it.
Yeah, not familiar with this. First time I'm hearing it. This is going on for three months?
Yeah.
Three months. I sent an email. Since I've been back, I've been begging for it.
What's that?
I'm gonna start. If you would like, it might be, if you want me to CC everybody, I don't know. I mean, it might be easier to just talk.
That'd be great.
Round table, yeah, I just, I don't know.
Okay. That'd be easy enough to do.
Yeah, and we could leave the chief on it as well, because that always works, because I know, like you mentioned about the Fourth of July, you gotta go through Steve and all of that, yeah.
And I will. You told me that tonight, and I will.
Do you want to mention the academy and all? You've got, that's got that.
Has the fire company notified the siren company that there is a problem?
Well, I think the first problem is a communication problem between us and you guys. Like, if you're paying the bill for the siren, I mean, I don't know if we're supposed to make that call and have that happen, or arrange for the service to be done, or if that's a call to Mary to say, hey, it's not working and it needs to be repaired because you guys are paying the bill. If we set up something to be repaired and then there's a bill and you're not gonna pay it, we would have to, so there's lots of little issues here that really need to be worked out, and we're trying, but we're kind of being a mess.
So tomorrow, I will call the maintenance company and tell them that it's not working. It seemed to me they'll say, when can we have access to the siren? And what will my response be to that?
24/7.
Right there on the town hall.
It's in front of the town hall, on the telephone pole. Everything's in the box on the pole right there, so they won't, they don't need.
Okay, so they have access to that? Okay, I'll call them.
It should be maintenance on it, they better, because the other ones- It should be Metro Cal wireless, that?
I don't remember the name, but I remember the amount, and I remember it was recent. Last week, in fact. Okay.
It's a recent bill. Since we've started this. It could have been Phil Safe, it could have been the alarm for the firehouse.
Right.
That's why I'm asking. It's not the same. That's worth it.
Right, fail-safe is our, for the firehouse, actual fire alarm system for the building. That's one thing. That may be the bill that was paid for annual maintenance on the fire alarm. The siren is usually Metro Cal, which we haven't heard anything from them, and I don't think there was a maintenance.
Okay, we'll look into it. We'll get it tomorrow, let's call it. I'm not aware, we definitely need a siren, so we will, we'll take care of that. We're not gonna debate whether or not, what or where it went. We'll take care of it.
In the future, if you can put everything in writing, you know, copy us all if you have to.
Yeah, no, it was an email, yeah.
It was, and I tried to get Padal to deal with it. I was talking to Steve Smith about it, and he said that they had managed to make it work some time before, somehow. I don't know the details of it.
It was documented. 100%, I don't like the informal meetings, I love having it documented.
But he had suggested that maybe that it was completely shot. That's what Steve Smith had said, so. I was waiting to hear back from Padal, so I haven't heard anything from him.
So in the future, for these issues, we should be going to the president or the chief?
Yeah.
That's a question of how that-
Yeah, I'm gonna do this for it, just put us both on it, because-
But who has the authority? Because it's gonna go back and forth, that Steve said this when we were riding by, and then we looked at it, and then you didn't know about it, so who do you want it to be addressed to?
Steve does the firematic portion of the fire department. Things with contracts and things like that, and bills and stuff usually go through the board, which would be me as the president. So, you know, it's tough, but sometimes if you're not familiar with how we operate and how firehouse in general, if you have something that's gonna be firematted related, you have to go through Steve. So with trucks and stuff about calls, I mean, I can answer a question about calls, but he's gonna be the one that does the state reports for the calls and stuff like that. Everything else that deals with the building and the air conditioning and everything usually goes through.
Okay.
And more to myself.
CC, both will CC.
But that's what I'm saying, if you want to just put myself and Steve, it's usually, because we're talking anyway, usually, you know, most of the time, so.
Apparently, you weren't talking on this one.
Yeah, I don't know. Steve said anything, but I highly doubt, don't want to say.
Okay, well, we'll look into this tomorrow. I feel a little surprised. Anything else?
No, unless you have something, we're good, yeah, that was it, just, again, inquiring.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, where are we? Parking committee yet, tree advisory. One from Jen Zoric, the chairperson. TB held its monthly meeting, 517. Will be, will be heard-
Heard a proposal.
We've heard a proposal to remove 46 huge trees on village property adjacent to 230 Main Street and to replace them with a few specimen trees. The board heard the proposal and comments from the public and applied the standard criteria to the request. The board voted in favor recommending the removal of it with the caveat that an acceptable site planting plan be agreed upon wherein the applicant covers the costs of removal and plantings to replace the value in the shade canopy lost, as well as improve the site. The board rejected the applicant's original replacement proposal, but will be meeting in workshop with the applicant this month to work out an acceptable replacement plan. Once we have settled on an appropriate plan, we will present the application to the village board for your approval. In other board business, the WWTA screening trees were procured and planted by the water department. With the help of highway department, they should grow in relatively, grow in relatively quickly and nicely. The shrubs and tree to be planted at the boat club site are being tendered until planting, planting still. There was significant rain, and then there were some issues with the sprayer that caused a slight delay in painting and planting plans, but hopefully that will get done next week. Again, we thank the boat club membership for this work and generous donations for the site. We continue to work with local landscape architects and architectural firm River Architects and Figure Ground Studio on concepts for the planters at the top and foot of Main, and are waiting on a few items before we will compile our report for you. Tree watering, gator bags, and mulch have been installed on the new Trees in Main Street Business District. Thanks go out to the highway department for fitting that, for fitting that work in during a shorthanded time. Our chairperson and village clerk met with Unity Utility Foresters from Central Hudson to discuss the line clearance work they will be doing in and around the village in the coming weeks. Please find June suggested work plan for your consideration attached. I'm not gonna go over the work plan. Everybody, if you could take a look at that.
But they're asking for funding.
What's that?
They're asking for funding.
We-
I think it's additional.
Now, it could be additional. We just gave them 12,000 more, plus to 10,000 that we brought it up, right?
Well, this, the, what, the way I read this is, there's an additional tree that needs to be removed.
Yeah, but there was no specific trees that they mentioned. I mean, there were trees that had to be removed, you know, if there's, I'm not, address funding needs for the one trees, one trees, which has that, that's needing removal outline. I don't know, we, you know, I think, you know, they have priorities, and we have, we have increased their budget twice, I believe, so.
I think they should just use the budget.
I think they should be using the budget and taking care of the most dangerous trees and all contact, unless-
I'll follow up with Jen.
Okay. I mean, I think we've increased it like four times. I mean, four, wasn't it like four or 5,000? Now it's 20 something? I know they have their needs, and also there's other needs.
The other thing that she's looking for is your signature.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if I even received that. I'll take care of it. Okay, let's see, tree advisory, Marie, you're up.
Okay, the May 20, 2017 report for the Code of Safe Committee. The Code of Safe Committee, offering in May. The committee continued outline preparation and research into the seven topics in the appearance category. The committee continues to make progress on B3. B3 is the zoning district that is comprised of the Nest and MNT Bank, and is now evaluating the bulk and the size and bulk standards for MU1 based, for MU1 based on the size and bulk for B3. The committee has reviewed all materials associated with the proposed recommendation on three-story buildings in B1. A recommendation will be made next month. The committee has finalized the recommendation on the topic landscaping in and around parking lots. Lastly, the committee has begun discussions on sign codes, both external signs and internal signs visible from the exterior.
Greg is not here tonight, which is unique, so I'll read his report. Water Department Monthly Operations Report. Meter replacement project, 97.9% of the project is complete at this point. East National Water has made all attempts in good faith efforts to work within the specifications of the contract, which is now deemed substantially complete. Remaining properties will be notified by this department of the requirements to comply at their expense. Upper reservoir dam rehabilitation to be added to report once the tonic replies to requests for information. Annual drinking water quality report for the operating year 2016 has been mailed out. There are additional copies in the village office, and it is available online at colespringnewark.gov. Source water protection. I had an opportunity to meet with Eliza Shea, New York State DEC, speaking about source water protection for our reservoirs in Foundry Brook. The majority of the land surrounding it are in the town of Phillips Town. Additionally, the village of Cole Spring and Nelsonville have a vested interest in a safe, abundant drinking water supply, so we're looking to set up a presentation from Mrs. Shea, I guess that's it, Shea, on ways to safeguard the source and conveyance of our raw water. It will be most efficient to have one intermunicipal session to start the discussion. I supplied her with email addresses to start the ball rolling. Let's see, that's from Greg. Okay, want the report, code enforcement. This was put together by Jeff Vicovic. This was, I believe, our first week kicking off. Jeff has been incredible at helping the transition. We did meet with Greg last Monday, I believe, and just went over some logistics. So this is the first report. May 31st was the last official day of building, village building inspector meeting was held the town building, with the town building inspector on June 6th to go over unprocessed open applications, procedures, fee schedules, et cetera. There are 19 applications submitted to the building department through May 31st that were not processed by the building inspector prior to his departure. Of these, eight required referrals to HDRB and/or zoning referrals completed. Five building permits were issued. Three were incomplete. Applicants have been contacted. Three applications needed to be researched regarding code research completed. There are 41 in progress, progress application projects as of May 31st. Of these, 11 were given to the town for final inspection and COs, and 30 are ongoing project. Procedures for referrals and communications were set. Referrals will be generated by the village clerk. Town building inspector will be consulted on questions of code interpretation. Questions from the residents and merchants regarding applications will be directed to the village clerk. Title searches will be completed by the village clerk. Fees will not be included in totals for intermunicipal agreement. Okay, that. On report for the highway department, wanna go over that for Ann? Is this Charlie's first?
Charlie's first, yes. For the month of May 2017, garbage pickup and brought to the plant 50.60 tons. Recycle picked up and brought to the plant 25.5 tons. Mulched, they mulched trees on Main Street, put 500 gallon water tank on the truck and watered the trees. Yard debris pickup, made corrections to signs in the village, put up new signs, fixed the water service line on Fair Street with the water department. Helped the sewer and water department plant trees at the sewer plant. Put a sweeper on the Bobcat to sweep and prep the streets for the parade. Had new tires put on backhoe. 2003 garbage truck head, new radiator put in. They did mow in all the areas that the village takes care of. They repaired the toilet in the bathroom in Mayor's Park and repaired water pipes in the storage room, and cleaned up the yard at the highway garage.
Can we, if you talked to Charlie, ask him if he could be a little more specific about things? Like about how many signs they corrected, or new signs they installed, or how many trees they actually mulched? Useful information?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Police report? Officer in charge Burke.
Community, everybody. Last month, we had 67 parking summonses, 24 moving summonses, and 87 calls for assistance. They were various on noise complaints, found property, lost property. They were, I do believe there was two or three domestic reports in that, in the report I submitted to the village. There was no major arrests or anything like that in the village at last month. There was a couple of things going forward. We are short three officers as we speak. One is resigning as of the 22nd of this month, Officer Pat Lovell. Officer George Kane is still out injured, and Officer Ed Bolander is still out injured. So going forward for next month of July, we are gonna be pretty, well, shorthanded. I'm gonna try to fill the schedule as best we can without incurring too much extra overtime with the covering of the shifts. It's the summer, the summer months, it's hard, a lot of guys go on vacation, but especially having, not having three officers. I have received two resumes that I'm looking at now, and I will hopefully receive some more, and I'll go over that when, with the village board at the proper time. Other than that, also going forward, I had a couple of meetings with the Chestnut Ridge residents. They are getting together to have a neighborhood watch. Myself along with Paul Piazza, who's the SRO of the Sheriff's Department, have met a couple of times with them. They're actually going to have a neighborhood watch for just the area, for just Chestnut Ridge. And they will report to Officer Piazza and myself on any incidents that happen. And they're, they're taking charge with their little, the little area over there, which is great to see. And really, that's about it.
Do you put out, do you, do you put an ad out for new officers or how are we getting these in? And it seems like we should be doing that quickly.
Um, yes, we should be doing it quickly, but also I definitely do want to vet the, vent the applicants that come in because I really want to go over, along with the, also with the board, I want to go over with some applicants. I really want to get the best people that we can. Unfortunately, again, most of the time it's a retired officer from either state police, NYPD or whatever surrounding law enforcement. Usually they've already done twenty years. It's hard to get them to come in as a rookie and start on the midnight shift, start on the holiday shift and have all the shifts that nobody really wants. Again, I do have various phone calls out. I am having a meeting with the chief of police, it's like an FOP, that all the chiefs of the around, surrounding areas, we meet for breakfast and we discuss police tactics. I am going to reach out to them, ask if they have any applicants that can hold dual shields, meaning they can work for one, say, North Salem and also work for us at the same time. As soon as I get them all together, I will try to hire somebody as ASAP. But again, I want a qualified candidate. I just don't want to fill the position with somebody who's just going to be a body walking around.
But usually you don't put, and it's just word of mouth or?
Pretty much. Again, I do have a couple of connections with, with the, my former employer, which is NYPD. I have reached out to, to the Detectives and Development Association on guys that are up here that live in the area that might be just across the county or maybe just on the other side of the water. For guys that are retiring, guys who are retiring now, if they could reach out to me ASAP on anybody that's looking to secure a, another law enforcement job.
And Ed's back in the middle of July or that's where he was scheduled?
I, Ed was, I have not heard from Officer Bolger as of yet. I will reach out to him. I know he, he is out. I believe the last thing I got was he had not, he had not received clearance from his personal doctor. As the contract states, all officers have to give me availability for the next month by the twelfth of this month. The twelfth of this month is just two days ago or a day ago. I'm waiting for him hopefully to see the doctor and get, take a couple of these shifts as he, if he comes back full duty. Officer Kane already had given me a email and said he will be out for the whole month of, as of now, he's out for the whole month of July. And again, Officer Lovell has gave us his resignation.
And Officer Kane, is he on workers' comp from a injury on the fire department this full time or what, where is he?
At this time, as far as I know, he was injured in the, in his full-time job at the fire department. As of now, I do believe he's, he's still out. I didn't get a clear notification on that. Basically, the email stated that he was unable to perform any police duties in, in Colespring, the village of Colespring. And he will see his physician in another six to, I think he said six weeks. So that could push him also into office. That was the latest email I received and that was a couple of days ago.
Is there, in the contract, is it, is there specifically state that you have to work if you're available a certain amount of time in each month?
Yes, there is. As of right now, when I just recently looked at the contract, the last contract that was signed by the village and the PBA, they, the maximum or the minimum, I'm sorry, the minimum number of hours you can, you can have to put in for is fifty-six. If you break that hours down to actual days, there are three shifts in a day. Day tour would be considered a B-line, the four to twelve, which is a four to midnight, which is a C-line, and the A-line would be eight, twelve at night till eight in the morning. If you break that down into fifty-six hours, that's really not a lot of days they can actually put in. It actually comes down to seven days out of a month. Any, any normal month, I have to cover between ninety and ninety-three shifts per month. That's twenty-four, seven, that's court chores, that's, you know, three shifts a day, every day. So if you're only putting in for fifty-six hours out of, I believe that comes down to seven hundred and fifty, more or less fifty hours that I have to cover between right now, eleven officers. So that, that's what that comes down to. And again, other offices that are available, like myself, who just, this is the only job I have because I am retired. I'm, by state law, I'm only allowed to work a certain amount of hours per month. I would love to have them be able to extend that a little further because there are a few officers that would actually give me more availability. So instead of just working, usually it's a maximum of ten shifts per month that falls into the, into what the budget is for them. If they, if I had a bit more, like if I could do twelve to fifteen myself and two or three other guys can do that, we can pretty much cover what's, you know, cover the availabilities they're at. So I'm going to try to do the best I can to keep the cost down, you know, as we go for, further, till, forward, till I get another officer hired.
And if someone's injured on a job or other jobs, their full-time job, then what are they required to give you? Or do you need something from the physician? Or if they have to work so many hours or they're required to be on the police force, then I'd imagine they have to have an excuse from the doc?
They, as from what I read, and again, I have not gone through the whole time, the whole entire contract. As I look at some of the, the contract, they basically just, it's more of a verbal thing to me. Most of the officers do, uh, will give, it's going to be extended leave of time they will give me from what I should say. The old OIC would get some type of doctor's note stating that this person will be out for the next two or three weeks. He's unable to perform full law enforcement duties. And because we are part-time, I cannot bring somebody back on a limited basis. Like some other jobs, you can have them answer phones, do admin work and stuff like that. We don't have that here. There's really not much admin. To pull somebody in and have them do an admin job upstairs, there's not a lot for us to do at that point. But as, as we go forward, I would, I would like to see that if somebody's out for a long period of time to give us solid documentation on, on how long, if possible, whether they're going through rehabilitation for an injury or an operation or what they, what they could maybe see if it's going to be thirty days, sixty days or, or going forward.
All right, thanks. Justice Court report. It's now, we will be meeting for our first negotiations on July thirteenth, I believe. Is that right?
Something like that, yes, yes.
In the motion?
The PBA.
Yeah, the PBA. Uh, next justice report. Fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties, three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Parking tickets, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Civil fees, six hundred and thirty dollars. Mandatory state surcharges, fifteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars for a total of eight thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Okay. Old business, uh, let's see, we're at old business, uh, do we, yes. A reported mayor and board of trustees. Lynn, do you have anything to work down the line?
I'm working on getting donations for our Fourth of July celebrations. I'd just like the press to know that we are appealing for sponsorships to help us throw a big USA Birthday Bash on the Fourth of July.
Great.
Nothing.
Nothing. Fran? Steve?
Uh, tomorrow night, there's a informational meeting on the CCA being held at, I can't remember right now.
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's, yeah. Seven PM onward. So if you have any questions about the whole consolidation process or, or just what it is, even if you don't know anything about it, show up there and check it out.
Steve, what's, I, I don't want to put you on the spot. When, when we agreed to become a part of the CCA, I got the impression that it would be three months and someone, a firm would be, sorry, we selected a firm and within three months, there would be something happening.
Well, I don't think we ever selected the firm yet. I think that's happening in this process. So we've all decided we like Jules the best.
Right. So when do we do the selection?
Well, we have to get the contract, the, there's a contract that we have to sign to enter into it. So the lawyer, the village lawyer has to, I guess, approve it.
So has Jules sent us a contract?
Uh, yep, they have, we have it in the, I thought it was in the office there. Just left in there.
And, and so has our legal?
I don't believe so. We haven't looked at it yet.
Okay.
But it's the same contract that the other, that Phillips Town has signed. And you guys have signed it already, right? I believe so, yep. And Beacon also. I guess Beacon, actually, I was told did a lot, a lot of work on it. I'm really looking at it. So they, their, their version of it is supposedly the most studied, I guess, or most looked into.
Have their changes been incorporated into the version that's, that we have?
I don't think so. We would have to get that separately, just to look at it. But we were, every township or village has to do their own contract signing. And then we all get.
So the, our contracts are in our mailboxes? Okay.
Well, not in the mailboxes. It's been, Mary's had it in her possession for a couple of months now. Along with all the other stuff for the CCA that people want to look at it, but.
Well, should we, should we be looking at it?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So how, how big is it?
Uh, can we pull it out? Need to get it, put it in our boxes again or give it to everyone or email it, whatever it is?
It's an email, yep.
Okay.
Email would be great.
And then I think the other thing is if Beacon or whatever has done reviews and have, you know, made corrections, maybe we could learn from whatever reviews they've done and incorporate that, so.
Yeah, that's what was recommended to me, was that they've spent the most time on it.
Okay.
Phillips, Phillips Town had, had no changes that they recommend?
Nothing. Yeah, I haven't heard they did. I think that Beacon's the only, yeah, they have their own city lawyer, I guess. So, and he spent quite a bit of time on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Steve, if I remember correctly, the session that we're having tomorrow night is part of the process?
Yes.
But it seems to me that, I know you got to me and I put it up on Facebook and it was in the paper, but it doesn't seem to me this is enough to say that we've covered that piece of the deal.
I don't think it is. I think this is just up there doing on their own, but we have to.
We have, we then have to have an open, okay. Because this, I don't consider this like a public hearing about this.
No. The only thing we had a public hearing about was deciding to move forward on it. And then now we have to do it again.
With the contract.
This thing tomorrow, they do it on their own. I got a postcard and a mail.
Yeah, I was just about to mention I got that press call.
I think it's a Q and A.
Yeah, it's an informational thing.
It's not going to cover us for the requirement that we have.
No, definitely not. It's just a standalone thing because they want.
I think some issues were raised in the favor by some people, but, or stating that, you know, there's faults with it or whatever. So I think they want to get upfront, in front of that and have a discussion on it, so.
I think it was part of their plan all along also, to do informational things.
Right, that's what they said all along.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of things. One, last week, kind of last moment, we found out that the independent state committee is down to two people, which includes the chair, Bruce Campbell. So Marie and I, along with those two, are scrambling to keep things together for the celebration and met last night to go over everything, go over the checklist. A lot of it's just a matter of contacting people and getting things together. And then there's other things that are a little more difficult, like raising money. So spent most of today contacting, like the Public County Bureau of Tourism. We donated fifteen hundred last year and apparently this year they're not dispersing any money till they, you know, reorganize. So that's a big blow to us. That's a big chunk of money. I did contact Sandy Galav, who, in the hopes that maybe there's money somehow we could tap into, and there's not. She informed me. Let's see what else we have here. What's that?
I think, I think we gave you five hundred dollars this year.
So we did, we sent out letters and, you know, it's on my list here. We sent out letters to Phillips Town and also asking for the trailer once again. I did also contact the newspapers and Doug was kind enough to give us a significant discount in our ads. This helps us. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Phil Heffernan was on the committee last year. He just had limited time this year to give, so he's not a full committee member, but he will be getting the final ad and poster together and hopefully he'll have it together this weekend. We need to get him a little bit more information and so we can get it out next week, the first ad. We have four bands are secured, fireworks are secured. We have commitment from the Lions Club that will be selling beer again this year. We're waiting responses from Howden in the Lions Club, I believe, according to Bruce. I don't know if he has counted after last night's meeting or not. The large, if you're familiar with it, the large bouncy setup that we, inflatable setup we had last year, apparently the vendors were not even breaking even, I guess. So they do not want to come back this year because it's at a loss to them. Also, it might be a good thing, there were, the cost of the bracelets, I believe, were eighteen bucks or whatever. And families with more than a few kids were complaining on that. So regardless, they will not be back. So we're looking at maybe some other entertainment things for, for kids. The decorating contest is a go and there'll be prizes for that. The kitty train also, which we had last year, which circles the lower area. That's, if the vendors available, that's a go. We do need volunteers and we could definitely use people's help. We have two people on the committee and Marie and I are, are holding up the fort. So once again, we have not a lot of people helping out and it's, it's a big undertaking. And another reason why we are not having the parade this year because you only have two people on it, so working together. It's almost impossible to do. We need people. Last year, we made some money by just, with a bucket out there, you know. You know, it'd be good to do that again this year. Again, we need some volunteers. If we get some of the kitty type games or some of the inflatable type games there are, they're not that expensive, but you need somebody to monitor them. Again, we need volunteers to help us do that. So we really, you know, sending out the SOS for volunteers to help us pull this all off. And also donations from anyone, you know, we're just, as Lynn said, we're reaching out to merchants who were generous last year, so we'll reach out to the same ones. We, we did reach out, we, as I said, we reached out to Phillips Town and.
I should say yes.
I think we said yes, if you have any clout.
Well, no, I just, I think we have a five hundred dollar thing from last year. Sure, you said yes this week.
Which, which is significant. It's not like we have a huge budget, but it's like, it's beyond our means right now.
Check with that Hannah kid at the inflatables?
What's that?
That Hannah guy, Hannah, Hannah kid was up here in North Highlands.
Yeah, I know what you mean. I didn't.
Because he's got that inflatable business. Like, we, we had it for nights at Columbus. We just let him set up. Whatever money he made, he made and that was it. He just took that space and whatever he charged. That's his insurance. So.
That's interesting.
All right, I'm insured. His company was sort of.
Well, he has his own insurance. So I mean, we told him, you know, he had to, he could be liable for anything.
To make sure that, you know, anchored downward.
Whatever, but just saying, you know, you get somebody like, hey, nobody's just down and set up. Whatever money he makes, he makes. Maybe, I don't know. Something would, ask him.
Do you know who that is? Do you know who that is, that person?
Um, I can find, I know that Hannah, I'll look up or find, I'll ask around. Is it John Hittis, one of his sons?
If the son, if John's son, I don't know.
I've seen him set up, but I haven't seen him in a while.
Maybe we could do something on Facebook, Fran, asking for volunteers' names and phone numbers and email addresses. We'll get in touch with them, give them assignments.
And I'm going to try to look into a few poochucks to see if, it's a little late in the game to kind of get this organized. And all this stuff was kind of on the table from last year, but not followed up on. I think we'll start this, we'll have, we'll have more direction and get it together for the next year. This unfortunately has put us right back where we were when we first stepped office. So we definitely have to get it together.
I mean, Football Association, whoever does.
I think that they're contacted. I don't know if they are doing it or not.
The Booster Club?
Booster Club or whoever, it's Football Association, whoever you are.
Bruce said Dorn Skanda.
Okay.
I think he was going to get in touch with her and then the KFC did the food and he was going to get in touch with Danny, but.
Yeah, we didn't do the food the last couple of years. We haven't.
You haven't, yeah. Oh, that's interesting.
Sounds like a lack of volunteers also, or no.
Should we maybe reach out to the Boat Club? Because I know they, they did hot dogs and hamburgers one year.
But didn't the, the Howden Football Association?
I think they did. They might have lasted, they did water and soda, but we didn't have them listed as that. But I could have sworn, I could have sworn that we were eating sausage.
Yeah, they had, we had some pepper slides. Somebody had sausage.
Hamburgers and sausage and peppers were here. No, we had, like, I thought it's happened about three or four years now.
Okay.
What should people do if they want to volunteer? Who should they contact?
They contact the village office?
Village office.
Will, with the phone number and email address.
They could use the village clerk's, my email, vcsclerk@colespringnewy.com.
What we'll do is, is assign them to a specific, if, if we get four games, for example. One of the games that we're looking at is a soccer game. And it's, it will require somebody to make sure that the soccer balls don't go into the woods or into the river or whatever. So, but you can't have somebody there from. or whatever, so, but, you know, you can't have somebody there from four o'clock in the afternoon until nine o'clock at night, you need to, to set a schedule for people, so, yeah, any, enough volunteers.
We'll find, we'll find something for volunteers to do, believe me.
I'll bring it up in the next Columbus meeting, next Monday night, see if anyone there wants to.
That'd be great.
I think it's a, it's a great chance, I mean, opportunity, I think, for local, not-for-profits to make some money, I mean, there's.
Well, I don't know about the food, maybe volunteers, help you out someplace, but, you know, I think it'd be too late to get, set up the food for us at this particular.
You guys always used to do the tents, or.
Yeah, we always went to tents down.
Always did tents, right.
Yeah, right, for the parade for the veterans and stuff like that.
But we won't be having that this year.
Right.
Do you have your hot dogs to cry anymore?
Yeah, I started back to a book.
Well, I think we're going to, we're going to reach out to some vendors, you know, like food trucks, like I said, and see if we can, you know, charge a little bit, and make some money there, and, you know, have, have some options for visitors. So that's on that, that's all we have right there for now. Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, next is a stipend for Jeff Vidakovich, Vidakovich, sorry, Building Department duties. So, this is a stipend that I feel we should give Jeff for Building Permit Administrator, he'll be taking the applications and payments. He's going to review the applications for completeness, if there are obvious referrals to the appropriate boards, he'll be making those, if there's anything that, you know, that he's not totally confident, that'll go to the, the Building Inspector of Phillips Town. He, you know, I, just, just sitting in the office this last, you know, last few days, you know, people have come in there, and it's great to have somebody with Jeff's knowledge, he, he can answer the questions, he takes the applications, and, you know, gives them directions, so, it's really a big help, and really definitely important. And then we'll send the information and the applications to Phillips Town for them to be processed, and be probably handling filing, when it comes down to the final COs. He's been invaluable in making the smooth transition, last Sunday, you know, in his time, he, you know, worked on, on looking through all the backlog that we had from our building inspector, and there was a lot of it, as, as he pointed out in the report, things that just, like fences or small things, but he was, he's, you know, able to go through these, we met with Greg, and he signed off on a lot of things. So, without Jeff and without his knowledge, after working, you know, things would really be backlog, and that's not what we wanted, we didn't want to hand Greg a, you know, boxes of incomplete applications, so. So, I, I think a stipend is, is, is good to do here, and since it's a, it's, you know, we need somebody with the knowledge, and it's more responsibility, so looking at what we, there is money in the budget for it, we were at one time paying him for five hours at fifteen dollars an hour. He will be there, whatever, so I recommend, for the first year only, and we can revisit this, you know, stipend of twenty-five hundred to three thousand. This is like, probably like twenty dollars, twenty-five hundred, I think it's like around twenty dollars, or twenty, let's see, not twenty, sorry.
Twenty-five hundred is fifty dollars a week.
Fifty bucks a week, yeah, or, I think twenty minutes a day, if you wanted to break it down, something like that. So, and just the work that's going to be taken, I'm not sure what else is going to be involved, so it'd be good to have Jeff there, and, like I said, we can revisit it next year, maybe it's not going to take that much, maybe it's five minutes for each, and we'll have the information that we can work off of, how many applications he processed, so, like, to discuss that, and people's feelings on that.
I'm okay with fifty dollars, I'll be, for the first six months, let's see how it works. Let's see how the process works, and revisit this in December, October, or January, something like that.
And can we do this with, is that easy enough to do for Michelle? Do a half-year stipend?
I would expect so.
Okay, go ahead, with anything else?
No, I'm okay with that.
Didn't, didn't Mary have a couple of stipends she was paid for?
Yes.
Only one.
We gave it to him.
We'll dispute this, but this is what I've told, and this is what I've seen, so, so I'm going to go with my knowledge, since I'm sitting in the center. She was given the stipend, but there was a stipend, there was also a stipend for the building inspector, so we have money in the building inspector section or budget, there's a line item that more than cover this.
Is this, was that the line item that was Jeff, that was Jeff?
I'm not sure, there's like four lines in there, I'm not sure, but, we have, taking out the twenty thousand, which we're giving to Phillips Town, there's.
There's still money left?
There's money, there's also three thousand, which we're not paying for the Butterfield inspection, because now that's included. So we have three thousand there, and then we have four thousand something.
And there was the fire inspection?
Fire inspection.
Yeah, or no?
That, that could be under there, that might even under another.
But the stipend that Mary got from registrar, that was reallocated in, in the budget, so that, that does not go to, to the clerk anymore. So.
Anne, Anne Bichard's taking that, I think you weren't here.
No, I wasn't, I was out of town.
You missed all the fun.
I did.
So Anne was given that stipend, well, actually she's given half of that stipend, to take, carry on that work, it was three thousand, we paid her twelve hundred, or fifteen hundred.
So it's something the village has commonly done before.
What's that?
It's something we've done before in the past, the stipend.
Yeah, definitely.
So you're going to make a motion?
Uh, sure, I think we should make it for a set amount, then, like, twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
So I'd like to make a motion to, for a stipend, a six-month stipend of twelve hundred and fifty dollars to Jeff Vidakovich to handle the prescreening of building applications, building permit applications.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business, flood insurance waiver?
This is the last of the flood insurance waiver forms that we need to submit to Spain, one of the others we did a while back, this particular building forty-nine to sixty-one Fair Street, there was a question about whether or not the whole area was in a flood zone. Spain went out and tried to get us some quotes on it, got us a few, but the, the insurance companies or whoever does this, part of the area is in a flood zone, part of it is not in the same type of a flood zone, because part of it is definitely a flood zone, that means the whole area is. To cover this for flood insurance is expensive, and then it's under twenty-five thousand dollars deductible, so on and off, it's pretty much not worth it, and we've done this for other pieces of property that the village owns, so it's just a case of, of checking off that we reject building and contents coverage for flood protection, I spoke to Greg about this, and he's comfortable with it. So we just need to authorize you to sign this, as you've done with the others that we did a couple of months ago.
We'll make that motion.
So I will make a motion to have Mayor Morandi sign the flood insurance waiver for forty-nine to sixty-one Fair Street, the blower and generator building and the wastewater control building, saying that we reject building and contents coverage for flood protection.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next discussion on severance, severance package for Mary Sari.
No, the Market Street Pump Station.
What's that?
Market Street.
Oh, we're a month, I'm sorry about that.
Quite a long debate.
Yeah, she's just getting excited. So next is the Market Street Pump Station replacement bids, which are a bit crazy, but we do have a recommendation from our engineer that works with Greg, and very familiar with our facilities, and so his recommendation is to take the lower bid, although as Steve pointed out, there is a great disparity in, from the lowest bids and the highest bid. In some sections, it's broken down into thirteen sections. One, for instance, is for mobilization, the high bid was seventy thousand dollars, and the low bid is five thousand dollars. The other bids were eighty and twenty thousand dollars, so they're, we're all over the boards on a lot of things. Then the electrical controls, actually, the low bidder is eighty-two thousand, and the high bidder was only fifty-one thousand, so that's a thirty thousand dollar difference. We also have an eighty-five thousand, eighty-four thousand dollar difference for piping at pumps from a hundred and thirty-four thousand to fifty thousand, and the other bids were a hundred and fifty to ninety-seven, so, again, they're all over the boards, and the lower bid substantially less. Bart Clark, the, our engineer we worked for, worked with from Oakwood Environment, did background checks, checked on their past, you know, work, and they were given, you know, they met approval by everyone that they worked for. He went back to them and asked them also if they had calculated properly because of discrepancy, and they didn't take their bid, after reviewing their bid, they, they stayed with it, so I guess that's a good sign. I'll, I'll read the, the letter, because I think it's important. On Friday, May fifth, the village opened bids for the work to be done for the sewage pump station replacement and Market Street, four bids were received, and I have received the bids for completeness and the contractor's qualifications. Based on this review, I recommend the village award the bid to King's Capital Construction Company. Total amount currently budgeted for this work is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, with contingencies in the amount of eighteen thousand, above the budget being held in reserve. The low bid for the work was provided by King's Capital Construction, the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, the bid submitted ranged from twenty-two, or two hundred and twenty-four thousand to four hundred and forty-eight thousand. The summary of the bids received is attached. I've reviewed the contractor's bid and have been working with them to provide information that was required to be submitted with the bid relative to the MWVE requirements. Required information has now been submitted. Even though the low bid is approximately a hundred thousand lower than the next lowest bid, the contractor feels his bid is complete, and that he can complete the work for the bid amount. I've discussed the bid results with EFC, and they have agreed that bid from King's Capital appears to allow the work to be performed within budget, and feel that it would be appropriate to award the bid. If you do not, if you do wish to award the bid, I have attached a copy of the notice award. This notice should be signed by the mayor and mailed to the contractor. We have thoughts on this?
Fran and I saw something very similar for the Main Street project.
Right, we did.
We had bids that ranged from five hundred thousand dollars to over eight hundred thousand dollars. Of course, with, with this bid, the, only two of the firms came in under the, the amount that we could spend for, for this project. For the Main Street bid, we only had one bid that came in under that amount. The, the DOT required that we go, that we go through a significant validation process for the bidder, before the DOT would permit it to be awarded. And, and the, the bidder held up to that scrutiny, it appears as if, if Bart has done the same with the EFC for the bid for the low bidder. So it just seems to me that, given Bart's investigation, and the way, the, what I'm assuming is the, the way the EFC vets a, a company that is, that is, has every likelihood of being successful.
Don't we have to take it, just the low bid?
If we don't take it, Bart said that it would, we would have, we would have to justify why we are not going with the low bid.
Which we couldn't do with his support of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, Bart has said he's done reference checks, and I, since, you know, I mean, we've, we've worked with Bart for a long time, he, he doesn't work for the village, or he doesn't work for the contractors, so there's no connection, so I, I trust Bart, that he knows what you're doing, he knows what he's talking about, I think he's vetted this, this company very well, so I'm comfortable with going with his, with his suggestion of avoiding this to King's Capital Construction.
And, and of course, there's Craig's note that says that if we don't go with the low bid, we could be held up.
Right.
So, so based on Bart's references, EFC, I would say let's go with it.
I would, I would just, I wouldn't even consider, well, consider the possibility of a lawsuit if I thought it was going to be, you know, not done properly. And since we have worked with Bart, I feel comfortable with, anyone else, it was just, if we just received the bid, I wouldn't go with it, but we have somebody that looked into it and reviewed it, so I'm comfortable with that also. So, make a motion?
Why don't I make the motion?
Yes.
To, to authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award?
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, discussion severance package for Mary Sari, as you know, she's a village clerk, worked here for twenty years, as we did with Ed Trimble, and for his long service, we awarded a five thousand dollars as a severance package. So I would like to make a motion that we follow that, and, and offer, and offer Mary, or authorize five thousand dollars for a severance package. A second?
One second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is discussion of vendor permit fees for Fourth of July on West Street. In our code, it's, actually, West Street's the only street, so it definitely can't, it doesn't allow for truck vendors on it, I don't know if there's vendors in.
Vendors in general.
In general, so, one of the thoughts was to allow that for Fourth of July, so, that's what we're up for discussion, we only charge, like, I believe, twenty-five for other vendors?
Twenty-five for a street vendor, although last year, for Independence Day celebration, we charged a hundred dollars for vendors, to permit vendors to set up on West Street. We had three vendors who did that.
We had three vendors last year?
Yes.
Who were they?
Greg, the Greg guy, the balloon guy, and the Italian ice couple. And I will call them tomorrow.
No, is that different from, does anybody set up those vendors in dockside?
They would have to get permission, or we would have to?
We don't, we don't, actually, we don't have a room. I'm, I'm being a little facetious, we would probably need to ensure that Parks would permit that.
Yeah, before, there's, I set up there before, there's.
There's always been tables.
Someone selling hot dogs and hamburgers.
Yeah, two years ago, the Howden Football Association.
Whoever.
In Mayor's Park.
Yeah.
Last year, they, they were on West Street, last year.
Whatever, upside, you're right, dockside.
Dockside, yeah.
I have to say from experience that setting up at dockside is not really a good vendor space. It was not successful for us when we did it, when, the previous year, when we set up adjacent to the dock, it was successful, so.
Well, I think if we actually were soliciting people to come down, then we would have to get permission from Parks, we didn't include it in our application right now. Maybe we'll own it by then, or be able to use it by then, or take control of it, whatever, in three years, maybe.
All the bands, that could be back there this time?
No, the band, the, one band will start at the bandstand, and the other bands will go on your, your truck in, on dockside.
Dockside.
And there'll be a sound system there, and a light system there.
And we'll just keep the food outside, though. Do we want to do the same as we did last year, a hundred dollars per?
I, I would recommend a hundred dollars.
I was looking in, it seemed like it was substantial, I was looking at sorries, and they were getting two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars for, for street fairs.
I think if we were way far ahead of ourselves, two hundred and fifty dollars might be a good asking price for we.
Okay.
Well, that, and also, if it was all day long, two hundred and fifty dollars would be good, but just from, like, mid-afternoon on?
They can set up whenever they like.
Oh, they can?
I would think we could do that, you know, if we have, you know, designated areas.
Okay.
It seems like we don't have a lot of people fighting to get there at this point, I don't think that.
I think we should keep it at a hundred.
Yeah, then next year, when we have it.
And just get to, we can get it as much as.
I can't believe Marie's asking for something lower, I thought it should be five hundred, or a thousand dollars, a first, firstborn child, we'd keep somewhere until they.
Just for perspective, two days at the Clearwater only cost you five hundred dollars. Two days at the Clearwater Festival is five hundred dollars.
But I was just so much nicer. I think we should go with a hundred.
So I make a motion that we, that we charge a hundred dollars for vendors on West Street on July fourth.
My second, that's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And if we end up having ten vendors.
Where, where is? Marie's paying the difference.
Well, I have calls out to more group from Beacon that we have connections with, as well as, there's a falafel person that we see at the farmer's market in. well as, there's a falafel person that we see at the farmer's market in Pleasantville who makes the most amazing falafel. So I'm reaching out to Kathy and see if she would be interested.
Better Italians, sausage and peppers are doing falafel this year.
We're so Czech here.
Yeah, we are.
We have a lot of vegetarians who live here, so.
Unfortunately.
And a lot of meat lovers.
I know. I don't favor one over the other, I just like to see everyone happy.
I like falafel.
Okay, approval of minutes. Village Board of Trustees, monthly meeting, five, nine, seventeen. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
I will second. Any discussion?
I have just one question for Bob. Where did the Betty Bundy bench, where was that installed?
Town hall.
Put it right in front of town hall?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
I have not finished the review of the bills, so.
Okay. That was the only minute? And we're waiting on the approval of bills?
Yeah, we have to do the batches.
Okay.
Why do we have three different batches?
Last year, this year, and then the Veridian. It's the end of the fiscal year, so some belong to last fiscal year and some belong to this fiscal year and then the Veridian she put separately. That was the whole picture.
Okay, well, we can jump to public comment. Does anyone have a question? Yes, Frank?
You know, I would look a little bit about the situation with traffic and parking within the West. We could, so there was, I can't get exactly which state it was, but there was a sudden rush of a very large number of cars down. I guess there was a wedding or parking down a bit, Hudson House Restaurant area. And it was really weird because people were apparently going there but going nowhere else. And there was, cars were parking in intersections and cars were blocking other cars and it was really, the officer found the visual and he made issues and tickets. It ties into my next topic is, the related topic is that we're looking forward July fourth, really the whole summer. The parking lot apparently down at the Salt Point has not been completed, it's not accessible to people. So people that may have parked there now are increasingly perhaps parking in our Village Municipal Lot in Fair Street. And so that particular day, there was availability at the Fair Street Lot, but there were people who wanted to park down right next to the river. So it might, all this leads into, would it make sense, would it be useful to have a, I know we have things in the window, like eight AM by eleven, statement of, you know, parking in Cold Spring and the first half of it is where there's parking, you know, you can mention the Fair Street Lot, you can also mention there's parking up on Chesna and Morris next to the baseball diamond, I guess, and there's parts of Main Street, there's parking, just, you know, an informational thing of where you can park in Maine in Cold Spring. Because I anticipate maybe some additional, and also maybe possibly down at the Fair Street, basically put a little sign that says official parking is available in front of Mayor's Park? Because people may not know that and the sign is down at Mayor's Park. Maybe a messenger pick is basically says for Village residents only, all those type of men, they may, people parking may be wondering, oh, I can't park here because, so this is some maybe explanatory information may help with this shortage of parking. But on top of that, I wonder, what my concern, which I've seen all on nine D, is that there's a tendency for people to park, this is in the Village, in the Village, on the side of nine D on Chestnut and Morris, but they're actually parking in the street. And it's a very serious problem, as you've probably heard, along nine D, along the hiking trails, somewhere. They're parking essentially either right up to the very edge, blocking any of the district traffic, but they're actually physically in the highway. And here in Main Street and Moore Street, typically we find people are parking near the gas station, but the vehicle is actually too large to fit in the, no, they're not typically, they're ticketed. But anyway, the second two-thirds, the second one-third of that explanatory where to park in Main Street, maybe something we can get from the police department, basically types of things that may get you a ticket, whatever those may be, parking in the intersection, parking in front of a fire hydrant. I mean, really basic stuff, but people don't seem to necessarily, we're blocking egress from another parked car, parking in the street, whatever those may be. Thanks.
You know, we have the winter parking on Boulevard, does the Village own a significant piece of that shoulder there that people park on, do you know, like where the? Because they have that chain link fence there. I've always thought that might be.
That chain fence divides Village property from.
Right, but that's pretty far in, there's plenty of room for parking there if we thought of developing it.
It turns out there's a lot, a large, no parking area there on Boulevard.
There is.
Believe it or not, people have been ticketed for parking here. The signs are not obvious, but there's, there's no parking signs on some of them.
So that's only used during storm emergencies or whatever?
It's, it's not.
Is it our property? The Village property?
I don't know why there's no parking there, but there are signs up.
Larry, what do they usually do during the, the fourth, or I know people, I mean, I think you could put signs on everyone's forehead and they would.
Yeah, two quick, I'll give you two quick comments. I was aware, one of my officers did tell me about the issue about the wedding that was down on the, this last weekend, and they were parked everywhere. He went down and dispatched a few summoners. Pretty much, I think they had a permit to be down there for the wedding or pictures or something, I'm not positive on that, but they decided to park wherever they wanted. And he goes, they go down and try to, at least give summons out and try to correct that. It was a little bit delayed responding, but I think he got pushed down that way. Going forward, July fourth is a disaster, as we all know. For as long as I've been here, it's like as you're closer, as you get closer to the event, fireworks, I've had people park completely on the right side of Rock Street, all the way around to the other side and just abandon their cars and leave. I would love to be able to give you great suggestions, but I'm only here four years and I know that the parking issues has gone back twenty, thirty, thirty years in the Village. There are a few things that I would like to see going forward. I did mention to the previous people in the parking committee, there is no clear signs whatsoever. There should be signs, and I don't know who, I would have to pay for it, if signs put up, basically free parking in MTA parking lot on the weekends. That was an issue that.
Can't do that.
They don't.
MTA, but you're.
Meanwhile, they have, they have signs inside the parking lot that is free on the weekends.
That's true, but you can't advertise.
Another few things that I looked at, there was also an issue with Fair Street that the signs on Sunday were a little bit, the signs basically say no church parking from, I believe it's eight AM to two PM. We would like to see, again, that's just me, because we can gain at least twenty more spots there, change that from two PM to six PM because we kind of do a buffer. We leave people there until usually six and then I, I in the past have summoned people after six because by then, usually they've left the village or whatever. Right now the sign says two. I would like to see if we can just kind of scrape that out, get a six to do that. That would be, you know, up to the board's vote on that. Other than that, there's very limited parking for the Village, especially come the weekends. You know, when I, when I'm walking up and down or I'm, there are people asking me when I'm in uniform, I point them towards Mayor's Park, right outside Mayor's Park to park there. I point them towards the lot, I point them to areas I know where they can park. Some of them are very like, oh, I didn't know that, I've been coming here for four or five years. That is free if you go down past Mayor's Park. The issue with the nine D, that's really out of the Village, to be honest with you. The Village line ends like right at the end of March where nine D starts. I've noticed on the weekends, they do get all the way backed up and park on the side of, the side of, the side of the road. When that happens, usually the county sheriff is, tries to be dispatched to handle, to handle those incidents. So going forward, I will look into a few things that we can do from the police department point of view, not just besides summonings and summonings in its own, more information out there. I would suggest not many people look on the Village website if they want to come to Village and park, but I don't know if there's anything up on the Village, Village website now, accessible parking areas. Maybe you can, can you put that on, I'm sorry, can you put that on and you can park in the MTA lot or no, you can't? There's no advertisement whatsoever with that.
Maybe we could ask them again. I don't know how long since we've asked them that. I know, I always know that they question, the answer has always been, they don't want us to say that, but maybe we could reach out again and give them another shot.
Would it, would it help if the Village website?
Holidays, reparking it up down there.
Would it help if the Village website had a link to the Highlands Current Visitors map? Because that, that shows parking all over Cold Spring, where available parking is.
Do you still have the map?
We're not producing the map anymore physically. I don't know if it's still on the website or not. It probably still is.
Somebody will go to Mayor's Park and charge forty bucks or ten bucks a park, but then you have some of the, you're a tenant and working here, you can probably make a lot of money.
Problem with Mayor's Park too, and I know the rec committee was talking about this a lot, when there's a function there, when there's a game there, people won't mind parking because the tourists are blocking there. So they, they were talking about putting signs on the fence when I was on the rec committee saying, you know.
You have to actually open up the park itself. Let people park in the grass.
That could be dangerous.
The rec committee will have a, as much as they can.
That guy, people working there the whole time to get paid, so.
Parking, parking attendants.
Can we talk to Highway and maybe they have more signs we could put out, like on Rock Street, you know, just for that day?
The signs are, the signs are, people just don't care. I mean, it gets close to the festivities, they'd rather pay, they'd rather take the chance of getting a ticket or not. That's just a couple of times that I've done the July fourth detail. As soon as they get close to that eight o'clock mark, when we close down Lower Main, now we're going to close it down about three-thirty, they're just going to be like, you know, if I get a ticket, I get a ticket. That's, that's how I see it. I had one, I had one guy come in from the city and said, how much is the ticket? I told him it was twenty-five dollars, he goes, huh? He goes, just put a ticket on it now. He goes, that's cheap. When I go park in the city, it's twenty-five dollars.
It's fifty dollars.
So, I mean, that's the one comment I had.
Is there anything about this other, this water district that the state's trying to enforce here?
Okay, so for the connection on the water district, or what they?
For the aqueduct.
We've been, we've been back.
Wait, for what, eleven houses, four houses?
Yeah. And so in their wisdom, they feel, well, first of all, we had to, we had to contact Nelsonville and they had this, you know, state that they would let us, you know, administer, you know, which we do already, their water and, you know, meter their water. And then for you, for Phillips Town, for those eleven houses, it was, they were asking us to form a district. So we went back and forth a lot with our lawyers and we're really arguing this point that it's like, cannot be feasible to do that. And so from what I understand, what they wanted from the town was a letter saying basically that, you know, that you can't do this, you know, it's cost prohibitive. And that's what they needed, they didn't need you to actually do it. That's what my understanding was. But they needed a letter, actually, official letter from Phillips Town stating that.
Where are these eleven houses? Are they in Nelsonville?
No, they're in Phillips Town.
They're just outside of.
They're on Peace School.
Oh, Peace School, that's what I kind of thought, they're in Peace School.
That's what I figured.
I figured that's who it was, but just.
So that's what they're asking for. And I told Richard, so, and they seem to be coming around on that too.
Yeah, well, twice so far.
Yeah, it's crazy. I mean, I don't know what it would cost you to do a district.
Didn't make sense.
Need an attorney to drop something. All right, we have approval of bills.
We have three batches to approve. The first one, thank you, Fran, thank you very much, video flash. These are bills from the prior fiscal year, which is two thousand sixteen through two thousand seventeen, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents. Batch number four one one six. Thomas, do you want me to repeat the numbers? Are you okay? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve batch number four one one six. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is the current year, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. This is in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. This is batch number four one one seven. So I make a motion to approve batch number four one one seven.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last is the Veridian bill, in the amount of two thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Batch number four one one eight. Like to make, to make a motion to approve batch number four one one eight. Second. Thank you.
Discussion. Now, was this for the fee they were charging against people's, we stopped working with Veridian?
Yes, and it's, it's, we have a bunch of accounts, so each account has a little bit smaller fee on it and that's up to twenty-five hundred. I guess we pull out before the end of our contract or something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else from the audience? The only one, the only twenty? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.